Good evening, everyone. We will, uh, call our town's mayor and councilman for the great night. He'll join you in the pledge.
The United States of America, as you are a father, which is the name of the nation on the ground. In this one, we've never seen the last row.
And our dedication, father has always been great for your family. Our town, the community, those who care about us always give us right. Also, we want to make sure, especially tonight, for all of our first responders here. Very, very, I never leave, but to make some extra footprints. Um, also, all of it to be safe here and safe. For tonight's, uh, public comment, we have, uh, signed up, we have Angela Lither, student leader, and Miss Lither, our, well, let's speak now, or do you have a special item to place?
Uh, my, if you have a lot.
Sounds good. Um, and you'll make sure you give your, you know, we know your name and address for the record.
Angela Lither, seven twelve Main Street. Uh, and I'm just quickly on to bring to the intention of the town, something that I thought we might hold into the city. I've been recently contacted by the major conservative fora. Uh, they have a Orlando-based, uh, representative office now, and they're promoting something called the Sea Nature Challenge Twenty Twenty One Orlando Metro. And it's just, we're involved in work on our part, but I think it's rather a wonderful thing. And the idea of the city of Orlando, Orlando's time, and other organizations, uh, partnering in this. And it is, uh, something that runs on people's areas, made third, where they encourage you to get out and look forward and observe and note wildlife. You know, anything from lizards, fungi, birds, whatever, in the environment around them. And it goes on the iNaturals website, and it's a little bit of a competition thing with the cities. Everybody's trying to see what they've observed. No work on our part, uh, because they don't provide the, um, information and files and things. It would just be a matter of the town, I just, I think on the both sides, um, and encouraging people to do that. Uh, I just found out about this, Neil and I, we're not involved, we're going to be partnering with them on this. Uh, if there's any interest, if you should, I'll speak to the town about things you would like to do this, I can put the two in touch and get them to hear. Um, we'd have to, someone, we'd need them to try.
And.
Is that something that you'd be approved by following up on, if we might become a, as a, before, a partner, uh, in the program, et cetera, as a town running here? So I should just get this off, you know, something like, thank you.
Just do a thumbs up. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Steen, please.
Just, uh, I know there's a lot of discussions about the trees on the new school sites and prison, it's all all council people protested or something. I just wanted to assure you that everything's been done, the harvest's over in our hands, you know, obviously others use ours. We did our trenching, we found where all the weeds were, we had the property good run, there was nothing that we were done up there, especially the dirt from the trees. And I do know that when Scott Mount is here, he was about to take one of them down, because the harvest started all these things. The mission does not really matter to the state anymore. There's no guarantee that we can move another one here. We're doing everything we can to possibly, I want to reassure the council, Robert Scotland, uh, harvest support yesterday. We're just trying to make sure that we get it off the way. Be sure of that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, for keeping that, thank you, uh. Here, may I ask, I think I have Susan Carter first.
I have Susan Carter.
Okay, I don't have an idea of who you got. I mean, maybe. Well, they got a rumble break this second.
This is a car, but I think it's a car, sorry. Um, I went into the arena, um, and I went to, if already you've seen it, it said, I read this on my report. I spoke with the board, sir, that he was tired, and I appreciate the effort that we've gone through. Thank you, please, to be the kind of tree, um, I like the, um, weighing system that they're having put in, or planning to put in. I went through, there, there's an A R saying, everything, three weeks, several credits, two weeks, not whatever that we fought, we, we, and I'm appreciating the efforts that everybody's saying. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Susan, and you know, I, I want to reiterate, and thank you now for coming to speak with me about that. But, uh, you know, argument, tree, scouts, if you do see anything that's not natural, or that we could tell the council, uh, to find out what's going on. Or that, if the information from the courses now, um, if you can get something additional done, we will, uh, probably come in on it. It always looks, you know, that, it's, I don't think it says that, but thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Ms. Grandpa.
Grandpa, twenty eighth street. I want to thank the town council. I want to thank Susan Carter and, uh, Fisher Miller, Nancy, those that were in, all of the elders committee luncheon today was phenomenal. I mean, it was, they did a great job, they had Andy there, Bob there, Rachel, those in the past in there, this and that. It's the time, the town, Robert, we appreciate the monies that we get. You know, they, I, I had nothing but phone calls hanging off the hook from the elders, they come and they appreciate me, and it was, they both owed it to me. I always told Susan, and I say this every time I see her, I say, she, what she does for the elder committee is phenomenal. If it were up to me, it would be a soup and sandwich. But what we do for them is phenomenal. So I'm, I'm going to thank her publicly, because it was, it was just phenomenal. The, the elders are calling, thanking them, we have been free to deliver free food today. We, we missed a couple, so we hear that taking them down, and we'll make sure it was, this, um, maybe the soup and sandwich that I put. But it's, it is just phenomenal. I just want to thank her publicly, because it was just great.
And sincere thanks to the entire community, also, I mean, even three of us, especially during this time, like, those are a lot of things that are not able to go out and get out. A little better, certainly, it's the video song. We're able to make up that, that, and he runs six seventy-five, so we have four forms. And it's, um, at this point, we have some very, uh, special presentations and awards. I'll start off with Chief Ogden, Mayor Police Department Awards and Recognition.
Chief Ogden, real quick, uh, we did receive, um, public comments from Randy, he starts a meeting, we did, uh, those, who are engineers, who are new and to comment. Uh, we did receive those answers, and they have been important to each of you, as well as, uh, Brandon himself.
Right, we can read any record?
Uh, it's part of the record, but as far as the answers, like, the answers is the record, and it's on right now. I'll sort of play your presentations, Chief. So for answer number one, the response is, under your flood event is only purple within the under your flood plain, which is east of Lake Vesey Boulevard, which is the park area. Scales outside of the under your flood plain can be designed with five year strong. Uh, referencing the question two, uh, the maintenance plans are invoked, can be performed or not performed based on the direction of town council. As you have a sale of our plan, we present it to you in five years. Uh, in response to number three, yes, the pressure of all the truth will be taken for, uh, the Vesey project will be a combination of fighting and squalls to be turned. Uh, as to question four, uh, durable projects are included, and they are a few responses, which projects can be provided as Westside Town Council. And finally, the bankroom shell material consists of shell material fragments, um, and grainy rubber materials such as sand. Yes, other raw material options will be considered. Bankroom shell is still, uh, previous, some words durable, benefit is that it provides easier erosion stability. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Love some comments. Chief, we'll get right back to you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, well, good afternoon, mayor, council, um, the town residents, our guest curators, Andy and Austin. Well, that's that time of year again, where we get to look back at twenty twenty and, uh, get some rewards and accolades, and those things that the officers have done. I think, uh, don't need to go over, but twenty twenty brought all of us to the good weight, given the twenty twenty-one. However, there's still a lot, like, quite a bit of work to be done. So I'm going to call out Sergeant Mark Steno first, and get a chance to talk about Mark. So we have the, uh, the same privilege and honor today to promote Sergeant Steno to the rank of lieutenant. Um, Sergeant Steno has spent almost forty-five years, is that forty-five, forty-three years, while in force, over four decades of service to the Clark community. Sergeant, Mainland Police Department, and he moved on to the Orange County Sheriff's Office, where he and I work together right here in this area in Center Three. Uh, I regularly rely on Mark to, uh, the what we call a watch commander. He filled in on a, on a regular basis, and there ain't for that key, so all high-risk incidents, all supervisory duties, and just pretty much run the show for the most part. Uh, that's why, when I had the opportunity to ask Mark if he was ready to kind of retire, maybe a little bit easier life over here at Windmere. Uh, because commend, mentor to that, we were actually building a mentoring program. One of the things that we want to do, uh, since I've been here eight years now, is we build a true mentoring program in this department. So that, tonight, I actually put our officers on, who's getting voted, so that we can actually promote officers through the rank, have longevity here. What we don't want, we don't want officers from the neighborhood to be a cop. We want officers that are, that are dedicated to our community and our service right here in the town of Windmere. All the way we get that is by trading the right, apparently, by building offices. So today, I give this thing, honor and privilege to promote Mark to the rank lieutenant. So Mark presented to you, Sergeant Mark Steno, until officially this day, actually, officially the other day, at the ceremony. In recognition of your accomplishments and service in the town of Windmere in the Windmere Police Department, you are hereby promoted to the rank lieutenant, like a fifth rate first, twenty twenty-one. Congratulations. Mark has his family here, so we can take the picture for my daughter. This is Mark's daughter, Sergeant Kathleen Steno, come up together.
My daughter, Brittany, and my grandchildren, uh, celebrate my favorite granddaughter.
If I could have Officer Griffin Hebel, come on up. The town residents are probably familiar with Officer Griffin Hebel. He is our go-to guy, and, like, he loves to work tonight, he works late quite a bit. But he's also the person that protects you, I understand. I say this all the time, and I think that the, uh, council probably did attest to this, uh, since they see a lot of our daily work. So then you may be surprised what happens in our town that night. Uh, you may not love it, though. I can tell you, just last night, he probably, he absolutely last night, he put it in the bird wing to happen in town, so. And he has done this time and time again. Uh, Officer Hebel's been a excellent producer for us, in my opinion, he's always been our top producer, uh, since he's come here. I think he's here on his fourth year now. I think it'll be my fourth year, going into his fifth year, so we'll give him a spot here, award here pretty soon. Uh, but in addition, you know, it's not just all about numbers and stats and arresting people, all that kind of stuff. I can tell you that in the last, this last year, we have seen such a tremendous growth and maturity in Officer Hebel, which I think is to be commendable as well. Uh, he's a great officer, and today we get to present him with Officer of the Year, so I'll get to read this. In recognition of your dedication to service in the town of Windmere in the Windmere Police Department, over the course of twenty twenty, you have several of the performance of your duties. Your commitment to the public safety and proactive enforcement resulted in a total of a hundred and six arrests and criminal citations, including in those arrests for twenty felony arrests and twenty-six DUI arrests. Additionally, you've demonstrated the continued professional growth by becoming a diversity instructor and implementing those lessons into your pursuit for excellence. Your professionalism and willingness to excel is commendable and most appreciated. Congratulations. With this, he gets an award for a ribbon he gets to wear. And.
His mom.
Next down my list is, um, Sergeant, um, Chip Erwin is not here tonight, he's on vacation. Uh, but talking about a mentoring program, Chip Erwin is our first sergeant that actually went through the Sergeant Promotional Program. We hired an outside consultant last year to come in, because we're a small agency, want to make sure that, uh, that, um, that testing procedure was fair and precise. And he's the one that's being promoted, so we'll bring him in, uh, next. Um, the next award is, um, Sergeant Jason Bonk and Miss Lori Seibek, if you guys can come up. These two are being presented with the award of merit. As you know, um, we want to thank the town and council once again, uh, for the town facilities that we are building, uh, which also has put, uh, a little bit extra work. These two individuals that continuously, every year, every month, every day, go above and beyond on the administrative duties, uh, that you wouldn't think, really, a lot of them would easily. And the fact is, they do that and their additional jobs. I can't tell you what Sergeant Bonk has done. He has installed, uh, the video system, he has fixed our computer system, um, and Lori has done the same thing, coming in on nights and weekends and their days off. So that they make sure that they get their regular duty still done, uh, but going above and beyond. So because of that, we're awarding them the award of merit today. In recognition of your dedication and service in the town of Windmere in the Windmere Police Department, over the course of twenty twenty, you excel in the performance of your duties. Coordinating with and assisting with the reserve unit, removing property from the storage facility in the community room, assisting with moving and sending up high T equipment. Spanning and relocating records cabinets for the town of Windmere, saving us over eighteen hundred dollars, and coming in on your days off and your nights, take away from your responsibility as a police clerk, uh, and sergeant are just a few examples. All while completing your normal duties. Your professionalism and willingness to excel is commendable and most appreciated. You guys get an award of merit today, congratulations. I can add our. Um, Chaplain Andy Jones, and also the reserve unit, come on up, right. So we're going to be giving two awards out at the same time. One of those awards is a unit citation presented to our reserve unit. And the also, uh, these individuals are individuals that volunteer their service in their time to the town of Windmere in the Windmere Police Department. As a matter of fact, combined their services over twenty-three hundred hours of service that they dedicated to the town, which estimates at about sixty-four thousand dollars of savings to us. We, we, um, submit them each year for the unit citation. In addition to that, we submit them for the president's volunteer service. With two individuals, uh, Officer CJ, um, here, and also.
Sergeant Paul.
Sergeant Paul, that is not here because unfortunately, again, COVID exposure, I'm here tonight. We see the gold medal award, which is over five hundred hours of dedicated service, both dedicated, some hours of service. I know John said he was trying to get to a thousand hours. Uh, the next level there that we have is, uh, one hundred to, um, four hundred and ninety-nine hours of service, uh, which is a, uh, bronze, and then a, um, silver medal. That's equivalent, that's just above that as well. Let me take a look here. So let me see if I can find the volunteer service right here. So Andy Jones will be receiving, is our chaplain, he'll be receiving the bronze silver, which is a hundred hours of two hundred and forty-nine, uh, hours of free service. For those who don't know, Andy is our chaplain that we brought on a couple of years ago, and you might want to ask me, what does the chaplain do? Well, chaplain actually does a significant, significant amount. Yeah, unfortunately, we have a little, you know, we're fortunate to have a little primary, but we're not a union primary. And as you guys know, last year, we suffered one of the worst crimes that we could ever have, so chaplain may come out and talk with family members and follow up with those kind of things. Uh, do a lot of social work on Andy. Uh, unfortunately, beginning of the year, we also, we've had a tragic death as well, and are beginning with a voting accident. I can tell you that Chaplain Jones was with that family, uh, for probably seventy-two hours, and then follow-up care after that, a significant amount of time. So anytime that we have a significant crisis in the community, we rely on Chaplain Jones to, uh, to, to help massage and help, help work us through those situations, those issues. And he's also available to ride with the officers and, uh, help the officers to make sure that we're both, uh, mentally, physically, and spiritually well, uh, so that we perform our, our, our jobs and our duties at the best. So, I want to read to you what the Presidential Service Award for the White House is. Congratulations on receiving the President's Volunteer Service Award. On behalf of the grateful nation, and thank you for the service to your fellow Americans and those close to me. For your dedicated service, you have ensured the continuation of America's unparalleled commitment to improving the lives of others. Over this past year, you have served as a, as a model of the American spirit. Your many hours of service has strengthened the bonds of cooperation and trust that bring people together, while helping to address some of the greatest challenges of our time. One of our nation's greatest strengths remains the compassion of every citizen, who would give, give so unwillingly of themselves and their life to benefit others. Each generation, hardworking, kind-hearted volunteers, helps to write a new chapter of American greatness, and our nation is proud for your commitment to this honorable tradition. As we reflect on the many acts of kindness and charity over this past year, our nation draws inspiration from those who answer the call to help our communities and our nation. With its continued efforts to build on our nation's culture of service, America will proudly remain a land of freedom and opportunity to grow. Thank you for your enduring commitment to serve our community and our nation. I trust that you will continue to work for the betterment of others, and even stronger future for the American people. Congratulations to you guys. Because of that award, uh, in addition to their time, we are giving them the unit citation. And let me read that. The unit citation is presented to the Windmere Police Department Reserve Unit for their outstanding demonstration of teamwork and dedication to the town of Windmere. Throughout twenty twenty, the reserve unit assisted with various community events, special details can be written. Despite the many challenges faced due to COVID, the reserve unit continued to support the uniform patrol with manpower. Altogether, the reserve unit volunteered a total of two thousand three hundred and sixty hours, a cost savings of sixty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars to the town of Windmere. Your commitment and diligence in duty, as well as the safety of the residents of town of Windmere, are commendable and, and have earned you this award. Congratulations to all. Oh, I don't have the, I'm sorry. Hey, guys, the presidential sense, can you get these out? Almost done. Yes, there you go. And Brian did not fill out tonight, so we'll come up with it. And I have a certificate of appreciation for Miss Becky Seibek, who's second board. And Patty as well. Somebody might have Patty's certificate with a board. And Patty's certificate.
I'll figure it out later, yeah.
All right, so our last presentation for the day, somebody else showed up, go start crossing guard. So I think anybody who has children in our community probably know, uh, Patty and Miss Becky and Miss Ruth. She, uh, she didn't want to come here tonight because of possible COVID. Um, but they, these ladies take care of our children, uh, each and every single day, whether rain or sun, it doesn't make a difference. Not only to take care of our kids, that they know each and every single one of them. I know, uh, last week, we've got an opportunity, the, uh, the governor wrote, uh, Cross Guard Appreciation Day, so we got an opportunity to, um, thank them for what they did. Give them a little presentation over at Little Maryland Elementary School, and the kids actually put together a great little video tribute for them, thanking them, so that was really special. So throughout, my glasses off. Crossing Guard Appreciation. Throughout twenty twenty, you went above and beyond your duties and responsibilities at the school crossing guard. Acts of kindness such as talking with special events, cooking and baking holiday meals, handcrafting special gifts for children and families who has scored a safely positive scores. And answering the telephones at home, the police department, and administrative office are appreciated and praised, not known on notice. For these reasons or more, you have earned this award of certificate of appreciation. Congratulations, ladies, and thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you very much, Steve. Excellent, gentlemen, gentlemen, by the meeting, that is a recognition of a special volunteer, given that county has been here over years. given that family here over years.
So Donna Steele just recently resigned from the Parks and Recreation Committee. Donna's been on the committee for nineteen years and was the chair for many, many years. Donna started the Run Among the Lakes, which has turned into a wonderful event in Windermere and a great fundraiser for us. And so we are so grateful for her service. She called me tonight and she was, she works in Lake County and she wasn't going to be able to be here, but she just wanted me to say how incredibly grateful she is for this award and how much her service has meant to her. She's very emotional about it. So we will miss her, but she will continue to work with us as a volunteer. Thank you. So we have a new title sponsor for Run Among the Lakes this year. And we are incredibly excited to have Orlando Health as the new title sponsor for the Orlando Health Run Among the Lakes, starting in 2021. We're just so excited about it. It's like a wonderful opportunity for us. Orlando Health is going to be a great partner for a very healthy outdoor event. And we're really looking forward to this year's. So we have with us Mark Marsh, the president of Orlando Health, and Don Willis, community coordinator, community relations. So we want to welcome them to Windermere and to Run Among the Lakes and thank them for the sponsorship.
Thank you very much. Marky, Don, can you tell us about you guys are some of the all that's on your names?
Let me clarify first, I'm not the president of Orlando Health, but I'm president. Thank you for coming, but I'm sorry, that is probably a different. No, I serve the western regions, I present the council within. Oddly, we're bringing the hospital, we just opened up this past Saturday, we're rising next. So we're excited about that, it's our tenth community hospital here, so this is central Florida. And we've got the two hospitals on the coast of Bay Harbor, St. Pete, and St. Cloud as well. But a lot of problems, just, a lot of just change here since I would be better serve our communities, right? Obviously, serve throughout Southern Florida. We're excited, one of the great things I'll say, we've vaccinated close to sixty thousand individuals here, certainly with both Pfizer and the government. And so we know that, we want to get back to, normal says the right word, but we vaccinated people. We just, we get a fine public, right? So give people a chance to be around and love us. And we're just, we're here, we're grateful to be able to serve. Thank you for those who have problems in us. And we just want to be here to build, grow around with the police and community to be able to serve. Thank you for asking today. Thank you, Mark, we appreciate it.
All right. But next up is new business and tonight council meeting. Which are two town council meetings, one for January twelve twenty-one and the second for January twenty-second. That must be a push-up. In, we can do more than one, which is credit. Question group, both of the judges. Questions group, by councilman Tim, please, for a second.
Second.
A second, councilperson, mayor. Comments? Seeing none, in voting with the councilperson, where do you?
Aye.
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 And, council. Next up is our Parks and Recreation Committee appointment of Tina and the Allen. In our written means approval. Councilman Tim. Let's hear it for the question group, by councilperson.
Second.
Second, councilperson, mark, do you have any discussion? Seeing none, we'll begin with the councilperson, mayor.
Aye.
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 Next up is a long-range planning agreement for Mr. Frank Friend. Councilperson, where do you, would you like to make that motion?
I would like to make motion. I'm sorry, longer. And so we can design.
That's a good motion, all right.
If you didn't resign from.
Somebody get a trailer.
Okay. I'll start.
Did you get there, please?
If you didn't resign from forest recreation.
Okay, so, friends is designed for the Parks and Recreation. We were explaining the motion for a second, I believe, councilperson's act, is that correct? Keep discussion, council. Oh, you can go to the councilperson.
Aye.
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 And our second long-range planning agreement is executive member. Councilperson, where do you?
I'd like to approach the group, recommend for executive member of the long-range.
You can approve, look for a second, guys.
I'll start.
Second, council, is that any discussion? Councilperson, mayor.
Aye.
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 And, thank you, council. Next up is our contracts and agreement. You guys opened this up, you saw three or eight teams probably. So, but basically, tonight, we got our town of Windermere and K H J slash K Windermere signing contracts for our agent projects. This is for IP one eighteen, and IP one nineteen. Basically, we, at our last meeting, Robert, am I going to say this right? We approved these at our last, we have lost here. The maintenance plan. The council wanted to have it, correct?
Yeah, we approved the United States amounts and then we did this all apart. So if it went, or if you want to do maintenance plan in the future days, pricing and options. But they do not exceed the previous motion, which was made in December or January. The only thing we had to work out was the formal R Q process specific to these two projects, which we did. And then we actually reached out to additional firms as well to make sure that we, you know, cross our, all our teams, other our eyes, to make sure that we were aligned with C T N.
And the C T N has a very specific guidance for ringers. So if you don't follow those processes, permanent policy, you get risked. Now, we see you back, to make sure that we follow our setting and plan out every line of process. I believe that West Councils intend to not have those maintenance plans put on this R Q. They're looking at globally in our key process to implement and house these supply. So we're going to look at each of these individually. Councilperson, you can end it with his hand up. Okay, we're good, all right. So council, basically, tonight, we're looking for a motion to approve item one, which is the K H J, IP one, one eighty, Butler Street, and Seven Avenue. What are maintenance improved? When they do not exceed the one six, four, seven. The motions approved, council.
I like a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, councilperson's act. Do you have a second, council?
I'll second.
Second, councilperson, where do you need special, council? Yes. Do you have a second?
I would agree with the modification that we remove the rent design from the IP of visiting the right hand. As always, the confusion, if you decide what you want them to do, what's that wrong? You can go to work, go with them. But I'd like to approve from there. That's present. Last council, maybe the others. First of all, regarding that we not of the community group, we're developing a maintenance plan.
I totally agree, and that's actually why I heard their conversation. I'm sure that was included. Okay, and the motion maker? You were in the first one, you're second, sorry. All right, so with that changed, council, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, you can begin with the councilperson.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I do, one, here's council. Our two is same with the, with maintenance plan exclusion. This is IP one-one-nine, this is our guest, and nine, not exceeded the amount, of two hundred and sixteen dollars, two hundred and sixteen dollars. Council, we're making sure. Question group, councilperson. Second?
Second.
Second, councilperson. Any further discussion on the issue, council? Seeing none, begin with the councilperson.
Aye.
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 Period, thank you, council. Next up, this is follow-up from our workshop, this is, I don't know, tonight. Town of Windermere Pedestrian Bridge Concept Design. There's a few questions that we had asked to get answered for us. And those items are included in the back of my poster and concept. And I believe that council, in moving forward with the black color. So, do you have any further updates? So a couple of options, a couple of these, we believe, are.
Well, as far as the color options, again, then there's discussion about whether or not you want to go with brown, bronze, as are available. There's additional prices going to be included once we get closer to the actual design that we can get to as far as thickness of the barrel. Glass that are on the bridge, bridge height, I would give it sixteen. So again, it's the curvature that will hopefully prevent us from finding a point and jumping off there. The only two things tonight were the actual post screen, the bridge brothers' post screen, this little color.
All right, sounds good. So just for future, looking at the stronger side, numbers, I think that will probably pay off in removing the aesthetics, but we don't want to talk about that so much for our this year. So tonight, we're going to work on color in the post screen. Council, you have the meaning with terms of color, I didn't talk about black first. Like, did you hear a conversation about bronze that you looked up as well? You did not know that color was good.
So I had brought it, setting aside. Why I agree with you.
Council, any additional questions?
Yeah, I'm fine with that as well.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, good. So, yeah, you know, the bronze is interesting, but I do think, I'd like to. So council, we're looking for a motion to improve the post screen concept in a black. Is that a motion?
Well, that's motion to approve the post screen concept for a while.
Motion by councilperson, you have a second?
Second.
You have a second, council. Any further discussion? Any additional comments?
We had discussion about the bridge. That's what it said. They got fifty-five hundred. I don't know. So, that came up in the last meeting. He doesn't mind.
The rest of us believe, we'd shoot it out fourteen, I think, yeah. But, I guess, with the bridge, it's too hard to pass.
Well, I think it was fourteen feet inside, and then maybe why?
It's fourteen, it's up nowhere else.
Okay, yeah, that's something, I think we gave a foot here and there, discussed, but we weren't sure if it actually leaned in particular. All right, so fifteen internal, fifteen external. Okay, and then hundred feet, I'm assuming the length is just a factor of the span and then the A D A rounds, etc.
I believe so, but I think it's actually less than.
Okay, yeah, it might just be. Council, any further question? All right, seeing none, we begin with the councilperson, mayor.
Aye.
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 And one, I'm speaking, council. That concludes our formal business for this meeting. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Robert, do we have any update on the state? Ideas for that?
I can ask them for a Dan chart, I can get that as soon as I can.
One of my, of a public input. You all of us, plus we're going to have councilmen, probably, or most likely, when that comes. Uh, making up this, on their part as well.
What's good is that now we have, you know, the ones that were assisting us in getting the concepts actually working on this, so there'll be no issues as far as any transition of information or a lack of communication as far as what was said before was being, uh, placed now.
Yeah, a little bit of some talk here, here, of the scheme. I need to drop off. Council, any further need or will council lead a summer first tonight?
As we mentioned earlier, the student appearing thing. Today, we have the orders luncheon, and we insert, you know, taking reason of our singers. We did meatballs, grabby overs, sour, sour, crisp. Also, there was paid work to, to the delivery of all residents in the Windermere district, that gave them to update information on scans and things like that. Always nice to be with the United Church, and they have, also includes the information on safety checks. They do anything to go around. Uh, they have been able to go around and ask. Questioned, check up, make sure they're okay and everybody talks. Uh, it's it's really good service and best good. We also had a letter from the uh, elder committee staff, uh, and explained everything, what we were doing. Asked if we pay any additional uh elders or label there, but weren't a part of this board. Please let us know as we can. But it's it's really better now. We're just preparing real.
Yeah, I mean, they like to food a lot, they know that, that's a good thing. Did we find that? That president. In terms of. To drop some. They're interested.
It was a thought of the last minute.
I agree.
When I saw that. Great. Which then written out of a very. Uh, yes. And then uh. And they are, they also were very efficient, rather. We go. Knock on their door and handle the mail. The one thing they want more than anything, one of the foods. Okay. A lot of them have not left their house. They're either. So it's critical that we we made a new town, set their off going. Because we're just great. I know that I went out, they uh, were not open. I used one of the lists. A little while. See how happy they were and spend a few minutes. Yeah.
Council, any additional liaison or? Uh, councilperson, our team will will go next.
Uh, D R B, uh, do not be in forever next week. Tuesday. At third P R B, we. Winter re redevelopment. Project, uh, very dark project. And already had a lot of. Interest from a number of residents of this uh. Town. So if you're familiar, please uh. Join in with that. I had a general question about scheduling, Robert. Election Day, March nine. We're moving to council meeting through March twenty third.
Yes.
Next month. So will the uh. Do I like the fish will be supporting the twenty third for the fall?
Twenty third.
You know, give them any rest, break them in round.
So, Bill, did you want to talk about?
Oh, yeah. Also, uh, the winter wine sign event for uh, this month of late. Will be held on March sixth, that's pretty rescheduled for next year. Uh, essentially canceled uh, due to a number of factors, COVID being. The greatest one, uh, it's uh, we had a great working relationship with U C. At the times, also with the Orlando Symphony Orchestra. Uh, but at this point. The finals is not open for business. And uh, they did give us all the date, which I think was April seventeen. They moved it back, but we all discussed it and uh, determined that two months from now. Probably not going to be that much further along. That would be delays and the different variants of the uh, the virus that are coming out. Uh, we may get the same vote, so we decided to postpone. The event until next year, um, and all the partners that we've worked with are definitely very gracious about it. Uh, and will be returning deposits to the thing with the purchase tickets and also the vendors and other things, so everybody's been very. And we do look forward to having that event this year, uh, probably in March. Hopefully we'll have the regular one in uh, ten.
Yeah. And that would be pretty. Really important that. Tough news, but it is certain understood. We'll keep plugging right. Uh, councilperson.
So um, the wait committee this uh, Saturday, Concess Fest, their event that they're running this year, they had um. Clearly this year's been a challenge, we're getting events up and running, but the committee has been working hard on producing the service project, which will be from nine to ten a.m. They still have some spots that we said this afternoon out on the registration website, um, to go out and pick fruit at the crow next day, the community center schoolhouse. And that in partnership with societies and others will be donating. Residents who aren't able to secure a spot to sign up and pick the fruit there or who can't stay for the event. Uh, can bring fruit from their home. Uh, from their own trees or from, you know, publics or wherever they might purchase fruits and want to donate and just drop it off over the schoolhouse between nine and one on Saturday. Um, to find the registration link, go to the town website with other committees, pull up the wait committee member page or wait committee page, and then um, there's a link on there to wait committee events. And you can then use that link to go out and use it, sign into the site, account on there that's from our state and this website. Uh, in addition to that, the historic preservation board will be opening the schoolhouse during that time, so that people who are volunteering can go in for tours of the schoolhouse, which is always uh, interesting, especially if you haven't met. Uh, so that's what's going on for the committee, Butler Chamber's advisory board has not met for the past two months due to the holiday and board member um. Conflicts, but they will have next Monday, the fifteenth, a meeting of the advisory board. That will be available live at their offices, T P's offices by the floor hall and by webex, participate by webex. Uh, to try to find that information, go onto o c F L dot net and do a search for Butler Chamber's advisory board. It is sometimes difficult to find that page, so if you have difficulty. Ask me, send me, email or Lander or visit. Lander and Tom Mark, I'm like US or get in touch with um, Tom staff and somebody can help you find information about Butler Chamber's advisory board. Additionally, one of the board members recently resigned, which is looking to build that seat, so if you or anyone you know is interested in serving on that board. You can go out um, to uh, the o c F L dot net website and search for an application for any board advisory board for the county. And it will give you an option to to check which boards you're interested in. Again, finding that form, send me email, I'd be happy to help you with, I found that form and access to myself, so. I think that's that's it, the tree board, by the way, um, a recap regarding their tree boy event, um, has some good lessons learned that they want to apply next year, but um. Uh, thank you to everyone who committed to their trees, you found it to be really successful and I think the neighbors who showed up, um, it's been successful and um, useful.
Thank you very much, councilperson. Council, any further reports? Right, just real quick, um, we did promise uh, you know, a month ago, two months ago, that. Workshopping. Own houses, Robert and I discussed that a little bit today. I felt potential workshopping this plan, uh, but I can defer until. New council. Uh, because there's a recommendation. Especially if we want to send it to many. Um, so that's a plan for that at this point. Roberts can talk about other state funding requests. Very exciting, um, and also um, just over the years, we have two of our candidates who are running the council here tonight. Twenty to have, you need to get it out there and raise your hand. You guys are obviously under performance, but this is easy. That's outside of that. That opportunity. Um, we'll go to staff reports now. Robert?
Uh, yes, sir. One of the things that we learned this week was uh, whether or not we'll allow public comment during the Zoom meetings and I can say at the poll from the town council. Um, I know we've had difficulties with people uh, hearing council members during these meetings. Tuesdays. Um, you know, so it's. Typically what has happened in the past, and we've always had it, was if you could not attend a town council meeting, provide your questions and writing your public comments and writing. And we submit them to the record, we should use the questions if they were grannies tonight. Um, but if you so wish, again, we can't over uh, during Zoom meeting. Um, to allow the public comment, again, it's a preference, but it's just again, the rights to be greater for absolute.
So my hesitation with that is that what I found occurring when we were allowing that was people here who were here and people online who were here either. You do very well with the full Zoom session, you know, the total Zoom, and you've done very well with it in person. If we do not have a reasonably affordable um, technology solution in place to make that happen, I'm really. And I'm I'm the I'm the biggest supporter of public comment here in the seat, but if we just don't have the technology to do it, it's not usually applicable. Forever and ever, and I think we should not do that at this time, doesn't mean that we don't want to do it looking forward, but uh. You know, right now, we have the ability to, even less. No, the rest of the council can chime in on this. I'm pretty opinionated about it because you and I are the ones up here trying to, you know, as people text and say, hey, we're staying, it's really hard to be.
I'll acknowledge that, so I I've met Tom a little bit with Tom staff about this too and with residents. And um, which is really important to me, um, I always talk about that, but I do. I I I appreciate all the technical difficulty and all of the inconveniences that this might create. So in theory, I'm trying to give every opportunity for every resident to be able to participate, especially those that can't make it up here to meeting. Physically, and then also for individuals to defer their comments until an agenda, I know we won't have an opportunity to listen to discussion and then be able to make a comment box. Those things do sound good and they sound reasonable, however, I can see and I did submit a suggestion for one possible approach, but I already. Within after the time of submitting that, have hence rethought that and realized that there might be some issues and conferences on Saturday, I'd be able to figure that out, so um. All I would ask is that because. As everyone knows, I'm not running for reelection, I will be whatever members of the public, the benefit will be able to take my comments by Zoom if I. And by Zoom. Uh, that's true. I would just like us to consider as technology comes available, um, every opportunity that we might have to to afford. And access to our our non physically attended people, and this is not just for the final pandemic, but in any time, anytime, to be able to to come and and, you know, participate from whatever.
Thank you, councilperson. And I mean, I agree, if there's some technology that we can work out that it's seamless until everyone can hear. That's fine, certainly screening, um, you know, so nobody misses anything. Uh, maybe. That's. It was very, very challenging. Uh, you're trying to do that, as I said, for me personally, it's too frustrating, it's a first thing. You know, I'm really. Quick to go back and listen, or really viable solution. I know it's out there and it knew it existed, you know, I just don't know the cost of it. Whatever take that make happens. Um, the council, you know, for expat, will enter that, we'll go that direction, we'll figure it out about it. Um, but as as the technology sits today, we're in very. Everybody missed a lot. Anything further to say on that?
I agree with her. Definitely put the burden on. That in council, after comments. That people uh, set those limits for these people, we're not able to do that, obviously. You know, part of this. Go on your eyes, but yeah, it's very difficult, but we had the greatest uh, participation ever. Everything was. But uh, it's been the same with her personal, but you've got to, you know, there's so many gaps uh, that uh. This comp can fall through. It happens someplace before we allow that. Not prefer, but people who are called a part of the new. The council being like they are council, it's hard to talk very good. I think we work for that. Right now.
Only other thing I think of. The only thing I think of potentially is that. You're able to do. And this may open up some other problems, so we were able to have a staff where we could ponder a chat. Um, you don't want to knock and forth with it. Careful of that. You know, those kind of things. What we were trying to do before. I don't remember. Really hard for Robert to manage it and felt like. More people were missing than. Getting. Does this.
Well, prior to us not being needed first. The policy was planned in some. And which favor. Part able to make. Email. Uh, if there's people who want to report to. And then it was read into the record and entered in program, that's what we're doing now. Uh, the only thing now that we add to it, it's good to be considered for. Serve the meeting here once or not. It was hard being able to interject something in there, uh, that was a huge point of that, and I agree, very difficult. I thought if you're watching, something you can keep everyone, interjecting and uh, just. Set time or up to give. And then then it gets fed off and then you see the chat. Box light up. I've got another question. That's the whole, I'm ready to move it. Fire now. I agree, it's difficult and you may be able to find something, so they will allow that. I'm all in favor of people to do it, always be able to do it. You ready to come? He knows.
I'm in a great, I'm in agreement with uh, council, council definitely on that we need to keep it static for, for that if I had it cut off, if not. The meeting. I mean. You can just keep turning up the question and keep it going, but uh, versus. They may even put enough to talk at every time as well.
Any more?
Uh, maybe you perhaps would prefer. Spirit of patient. Person. I'm not a public spirit. But I. Part of this reporting. Uh, maybe there's any more uh, questions that. On the side. And the on and some for. Uh, maybe if you were ready to uh, use the question. That. I'll be.
And and you know, maybe some, maybe there's another, your council that's doing this super well, that's something we can look at. It's very to check that out. Again, not good, it's just. It even, we're gonna try to do with what we have, which everybody's worked really hard on. It was just, I just know that challenging, maybe someone's burning. It's uh, yeah, it was just other reason.
Yeah, I think the cutoff was something that I've proposed tonight, and I I feel like that was what I technically think is items to the cutoff. It's, it would be, who would do it, you know, and Dr. He's trying for minutes and she's also a practical manager, you know, monitor all of this, it just. I I don't see the part for it right now, so.
Yeah, but the new brand is software that we're managing, she's able to document live minutes and that was again, had another role there, just to show you the difficulty. The other things happening, um, I'm talking about the hospital incentive, those that testify on those piddies. They're on Zoom, but I have to drive to Dallas, see, go to the civic center, sign in, go to a room where they have a monitor. They're on Zoom, but I have to drive to Tallahassee, go to the civic center, sign in, go to a room where they have to monitor. And then testify in front of the monitor. As opposed to me just sitting at home, saving a three and a half hour, four hour trip and just testifying from, you know, the government at home. They need to actually drop up there to Zoom as opposed to testify live in person. So, yeah.
If we find something that we like and it works for us, regardless of that, I'm happy to do it. And I think right now.
The, the, the program that we're using. We're kind of automatic. We can take a look at how we did it where that public comment typically be, um, on a lot of the initiatives previous to when we have the Zoom hybrids, we require that they provide their public comments to, for the twenty-four hours. So I mean, that's pretty much the end of what we can as well. Um, we want to have that going. If we were to receive those public comments within twenty-four hours, I can hear you, so those questions that we received at five o'clock tonight. We would have to do a certain waiver beyond provide to you guys. Um, so you can see the questions, see the answers, and probably ending this, um, necessity for you bringing that up at the meeting. Um, I think the residents are very accessible, very transparent, uh, getting to us, asking questions. As opposed to individually contacting, uh, six of the officials and asking the same question as opposed to contacting staff and answering.
One of the things, you know, I'm, here one is, and I'm a big supporter of this, we're very flexible. Not only do we allow people to make public comments, we allow people to first actually act, like, to use the conversation of, of making that. Um, there are jurisdictions that only allow public comment and very easily, I think it's useless, but you know, it's a loud quality, people do that, they think things sometimes that are not meant to be used. Or super accessible, everybody knows what we're having. Um, and if there's a versatile way to do this that works smoothly and seamlessly and everything, but, um, you know, I still do it there today. So I don't, uh, complicate it too much and certainly, you know, I think it is holding on, on those that participate. You know, give us the opportunity, give us the time to much better meet, use better construction, have all the facts. I think that's really good. Thank you, Robert.
Uh, thank you. And talking about the house bills and senate bills, we do have, um, five individual house bills, the way and senate bill numbers. Um, we were able to work with Representative Gerald Thompson on, um, three appropriations for the colonization of the water master plant. Uh, that's going to be about ten million dollars in appropriations. Then we had two separate bills, um, related to transportation, which includes the Bestrian Bridge. And the trail, um, from north to around the east coast, that's initial two million dollars. And so appropriations we've been asking, uh, from the state is about twelve million dollars. Uh, once that reaches the committees, then we'll be able to go up there and testify. Uh, they keep switching the dates on us, um, we give an initial committees, uh, first, and then I'll get into the appropriations. Um, I'm looking at maybe into late February, actually one, I'll ask if that's fine, which no one knew that. I'll give you the names of the people that sit on the, um, respective boards, see an email, your support, your contact information, so on and so forth. Um, but then we had Senator Torres also, um, is working in the senate, um, in order to, to present those bills and their dates. And then, you know, having the co-sponsors really helps you with trying to get those things through. Um, you know, hopefully yes, but you know, I'm realistic, I'm just getting that, you know, there's a decline in the economy right now. So we might not get it this time around. Um, but if you don't ask, we'll give you the answer and so hopefully, uh, it will over, uh, if not this year, it will over to next year as well. At least we'll notice it with other players and then, uh, we talk and see what the new members next, um, go.
There's not getting the, the bills there.
That's huge. And then I just want to say again, uh, Stephen from the Chamber Congress will be, uh, moderator of the assistant, uh, former mayor, Gary Room. Uh, so please tune in, we have the Zoom link that is up and it will be, um, I'm not aware of the questions, so, uh, it's fair for everybody. Uh, but we do have the four candidates that are going to be on Zoom, so again, thank you. Questions from Stephen, and I think they'll learn of, uh, the last ninety twenty minutes, comments, questions from, uh, residents themselves. Um, my Q and A is on the same night as a candidate, I think it was Bush to February twenty-fourth, so. We do a little Q and A with the residents, last Q and A, so everyone person show up in their parking lot, stands, waiting on them to pick up their order. And what's even a resident to do is the representative property racer, so, um, I talked to her about forty-five minutes, also waited for her groceries and for the ladder card, but, uh, doing what's a good duty. Um, as you'll see, your agenda back is, uh, and we will do, do all agendas again, typically do that, your project meetings, sure, stash. Um, we had been working with the, um, healthy western orange trails, uh, master plan lines, whatever you want to call it. Um, so they have the draft designs, how we're going to interconnect all the systems. Uh, they're working on prioritizations of those systems and we're working with the NPO as well to draft them, let it's work rate of eight percent. For analog interconnecting the systems, um, with their, um, master plan as well. They funded three P D studies and they're still working on that, but it just seems like one is not talking to the others. So, uh, we're trying to get them to start working together, understand that what benefits Westmore is going to definitely benefit some of the terms. Orange County. Um, last thing I have is, again, your agenda back is the updates on town facilities, we'll be receiving those on a monthly basis. Uh, if at any point you can test emails, see if those on the next door, about any issues that this year's current over at the, um, town facilities. Like we still created a contact desk to make sure that we do factor in. Uh, but that will be monthly reviews, seeing on each agenda, also for the public to see as well, as any of the ways and issues on.
And so I have, and it was like a making good progress. We have a special guest tonight here, your sponsor, Will, sir.
Mayor, hello.
Good to see you. Anything to add tonight?
I'm sorry?
Anything to add tonight?
Uh, I'm just glad everybody came out and played, so it's nice to see everybody.
Sounds good. All right, we're happy to have you.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for all the support from officers out there for getting these spots and to, uh, get the special recognition they did tonight. So a few items that we did around here, uh, drill up the Winnemere Elementary School, um, actually a few weeks ago, that's, uh, checked out there. Also, I mentioned the New York City attorney moving to the URL last week, so if you have any questions about that. Um, I did talk to her about, um, our particular case in town Manhattan, what our existing support for that. Um, she said she's going to get back to me, so I will make sure that I can, on that. So any of you that are elected officials, that's certainly going to come along, you can find out what our state is, uh, whether she lays or not with that penalty. In the case section, we're all about prosecuting. I think that's important to all of us, uh, in our town. Uh, we probably, and we've had some other incentivizing things that popped up over the last couple of months. One of them was that daily connection, because it's kind of worked really well on that. Another one ended up being a Verizon issue, so that's, I definitely have our budget that we wanted. So, you know, those things come through, um, actually, I already worked out with, um, folks at Verizon, if they don't come through, like an action. That or something, that was their fault, some of the mistakes that were made. And we'll let you guys know, uh, we're very short handed now, um, so just, it just kind of Murphy's Law just kicked in a little bit. Uh, we have one higher, one physician, we've had him higher, but he's not coming up so far. He works at the New York City Police Department right now, retiring there after eighteen years, and it's going to be very high for us. Uh, we've got one down because, uh, he was out for shoulder surgery, uh, one this Friday, so he had a baby. And, um, as you know, Sergeant George, he's got no backbone, he's not in the senate, and he'll be retiring in just a month. So commensurate with that, we're actually already building out a process, we've been building this since January one. We are doing very well, we have a lot of applicants, and I can't say that for rest things. We've got some very qualified applicants, uh, that would like putting in for us. So it's a good place to be in, but at the same time, uh, we're just a little short right now, so you can kind of ready to see that out there. We have everything covered, everything's doing well. Um, we are preparing for a spring break, I know it's coming up, so we'll make sure that we do it. Uh, have our off duty set up for a book detail, a book grand detail on that. If the weather's not good, then we'll kind of cancel that, play that by here. Uh, and the last thing, kind of remember, um, you know, I certainly keep up with the line of duty guests every year. We have forty-one officers with a line of duty this year. If we maintain this course, every single year we do all that, and then last year we had COVID. So it was increased because of COVID, but the normal attacks on officers actually increased as well. Uh, five of those deaths are written in the report, and if you guys know just a little bit, second, there are two FBI agents that, uh, that were killed and three others that were shot, I think that's search information, my brothers. Sergeant down there works with him and actually is at the hospital there. Um, so it's scary when you look down, Florida, Texas, New York, and California have always been, um, unfortunately, the, the top, uh, states. When it comes to law enforcement, policy, you know, the line of duty, this is a problem trend that we're continuing to see. Everyone only had COVID last year, nobody's supposed to be out seeing anybody or doing anything, so that's a problem trend. So with that, I've got some training days coming up, I'll send those to you guys. So council members, you're welcome to all, and we encourage you to train, all that, send all our trainings. I think that's helpful, uh, when issues do occur, it's not, it's not end, but one, if a issue do occur in the future, you get to see our self, that's our firearm training. Use supports and all that kind of stuff, so that answers a lot of questions there. Any questions, man?
Usually you take your training on the new council. Yeah, we have some log in tapes. Thank you, chief. We appreciate it. Travis, sir?
Public Works has been working very closely with Parks and Rec over at Central Park. We've got some trees that'll be removed, um, there's a slab. And John Neighbors is donating dispatches or working with PJQ on that. Uh, we've been working at the main street tennis courts. Uh, all the lights have been repaired, we've been to the Ozonation. Um, replaced the last two tennis nets today. I've been in contact with Councilwoman Penley on a self closing, uh, lock for the, for the gate at the sports. Trying to figure something out with that. Um, we've been cleaning signs around town, um, continuing with, uh, PJQ on, uh, the side walls on Sixth Avenue. Um, all the regulatory signs have been installed on six. Ordered a sign for festival floor, that way it can match the rest of those old block. So far, I've seen one one today, one in today, very, I'm not, I'm still waiting for more. I will reach out to them tomorrow again and see if I can get that stuff submitted.
Thank you very much. I'm going to do it, appreciate all the work. Um, can you check in a minute on the, we had that line map over the roundabout, like orders. Um, I think it's been put back in, I know it takes a little while. But I'm always sensitive and I'm a visit, uh, dark pretty early, a lot of across the, so maybe we just check.
Yeah, I'll wait out to do tomorrow on that.
Thanks. For, for Walter. I'm good?
We will be having a collection, you know?
I do.
And I have been contacted. On race and the same, and probably, I will be far. I'm going to think whether we will have or not.
Sounds good. All right. Anything else for the orderly order, councilor staff? Uh, Steve, I think it was here, I think it was here, that, that seven twenty-five bingo.